Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're first gonna start out with Tom and Nicole with their presentation.
Drescher and Molecki.
Drescher and Molecki, the auditors.
Thank you. I believe you have before you the financial statement packages for the year ended June 30th, 2013. My name's Tom Molecki. I'm a partner with the audit firm of Drescher and Molecki. I have with me the engagement partner, engagement manager, Nicole Ruff, who kinda organized and saw it and worked with Mary to summarize the financial findings of the school district. We met with the audit committee and gave a detailed report just a few moments ago. What I wanna speak to the full board is, just to give you an idea of what our end product was and what the financial condition of the district is as of June 30th, 2013. First of all, our responsibility is to create procedures based on the controls that we observe and then create procedures to validate that the numbers presented to us from management fairly state the operations for the 12 months as well as the financial position as of June 30th, 2013. Once we go through those procedures, we give an opinion whether those numbers can be relied upon, and that's our job. Ultimately, we came to the conclusion that the numbers fairly state the financial position as well as the operations. That means the third party, whether it's the state government or any other banking agency, looks at your financial statements, they know that those financial statements can be relied upon. And that's what our job is. What happened in the end is, we did look to the revenues and expenditures and your fund balance. Your fund balance is in a very stable position. We shared with management that your reserves have gone, increased over the last five years about $3 million, which is in a good position. Just a few years ago, you've had a couple of thousand dollars every year that's in there. When you think about that, if cash is just held up for one month by a state agency or so forth, you're gonna be short eight or 10 percent of your fund. So you need to have some reserves on hand. Ultimately, we looked at the spending patterns, we compared the spending patterns not only to just last year but from five years ago. We see that the spending has been pretty controlled in the district. It's increased at three-quarters of 1 percent on average over that span of time. And in the same time, we've been able to maintain our revenue status and increase our revenue a little bit to get that reserves to where we're supposed to be. All in all, I think we're in a physically stable position. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report on. So that kinda concludes our report, the very sentence that we report to schools. Questions that the board may have?
Thank you. Alright, and then we also have the Erie County School Board Association. Jane and Kat.
I'm Jane Brusinski. I'm the second record of the Erie County Association of School Boards. And with me tonight is Kathy Ann Lorca, former Easter Ross School Board member, former ECASB treasurer, and currently a member of our promoting partnerships with public education organization. It's a long, neutral, wonderful, nice lady. While many organizations go very high-tech, as you can see, trees continue laying down their lives for us, I would like to walk you through it, if you would, to take a little walk through this with me and introduce you or reappoint you with the work of the Erie County Association of School Boards. It's powerful that you'll want to participate and be involved. If you have questions or need more information, obviously we're here, but a big story is right right in front of you in this folder. It starts by talking about our mission, and it says, "Our mission is to provide member boards with leadership and support to promote effective management and delivery of services to public school students." Sounds beautiful, and it sounds like it was drafted by a committee, doesn't it? Basically, we hope to work with board members to help them provide the leadership to the districts that can make business go smoothly, that help students learn, and to make the whole educational enterprise more effective and efficient. To do this, if you flip the page, we provide four key areas of service. It's training, advocacy, information, and resources. And in the next tab, I just said to highlight some of the activities under those areas. Our training areas are provided in governance, leadership development, school law and legislation primarily, and you see the list of different programs that we provide. But on the line sheets, you'll see that we start at the very beginning, because there's no degree enough to be a school board member. It's on-the-job training, most people are elected in when the job begins. To help people get acquainted with the role, we start before they're even running for a board, and it's a prospective school board member workshop. And if they're fortunate enough to be elected, we are a New York State approved provider of the required trainings to New York State. The one is the governance and performance accountability training, and the other one is the fiscal oversight responsibility training. If you're a member of ECASB, the trainings are provided for $50 each. It's the lowest price in the state. We're very, very proud of that, and we're able to do that through our collaboration with Erie One Voces and through a lot of nice volunteers who help provide that training. Once we become a board member, you still learn that it's one of the most heavily regulated industries in the country. Hence our annual education law conference. This year's topics covered finance and operations, various employee issues, including negotiations and private bargaining, and student issues such as discipline. And we always do a special ed update because things always change in special ed. This program, like all our programs, is open to the member district board of education members, superintendent, as well as reduced staff in principals, so it's open to a lot of folks. We also provide steps in just the nuts and bolts of how to lead in a school board setting, including more effective and efficient meetings. And if you don't know how important that is, you've never been in a meeting, it's been badly organized because it's not effective, it's not efficient, and there are ways to make it that way and keep it that way. In addition to the nuts and bolts, we need to take a look at the bigger picture of what's out there. And this is our program that's coming up on October 3rd. We're calling it "Revisiting Ourselves: Making Schools Work in the Current Fiscal Framework", and we have some school leaders speaking on restructuring, instruction, and labor relations, and the changes that are probably imminent given the current fiscal state of our schools and our state. Let's talk about advocacy. ECASB provides advocacy activities at the local, state, and national levels. Locally, we have legislative team, we have about 60 members on that team. We go awareness, engagement, tell people what the legislation is, how it impacts schools, how it impacts your finances. We partner with organizations such as PTA and the Women Voters to drive our message and advocacy efforts forward. We provide our annual legislative breakfast. We identify several areas of concern that we want to talk to legislators about, and basically we have a conversation with all of our legislators. Once a year, in February, we also, behind the scenes, well, behind the scenes, but it's not always a big event, other times we meet privately with them in their offices to discuss concerns of our districts. At the state level, we participate in the statewide school finance consortium training sessions with Director Rick Tims. We participate in the New York State School Boards Capitol Conference, each March in Albany, also meeting with our representatives there. And at the national level, we go to the Federal Relations Network Program in Washington, DC, where we also meet with legislators on issues at the federal level. And these things are important because not all of you obviously can can't beg and go away for a weekend or a couple days to go meet with people and discuss these issues. We can, that's our job, that's what we do. And we bring the information back home to you, whether through meetings, through the website, or through our weekly emails that we send to all of our members. We also provide testimony. Again, you, even if you feel strongly about an issue, can't be everywhere to meet with legislators or go to their hearings, but we can. So we've provided testimony on mandate relief, we've provided testimony to the Governor's Education and Foreign Commission, we've testified on New York State School Board members' feelings about school safety, testified on changes to special ed regs, on the effects of a tax levy cap on our school districts, on federal sequestration, and on the use of Voces services for cost savings. If there's an issue that's costing money, we testify about it. If there's an issue that can save money, we are testifying about it. So people know how school boards feel. On November 21st, just to let you know, we also bring people out to talk with us. We're going to host a program with Brian Cole. He was, NISWA's Assembly Leader of the Year for his work on mandate relief, and we're bringing him in for an evening of discussion on our various mandate relief issues, and I love his quote, "Unfunded mandates are like termites, boring their way into a homeless foundation." Well, yeah, they are, and we wanna talk about that. We help pull together coalitions and support for mandate relief, and we have what we call this year, if you look at the green sheet that follows, Teachable Moment. It's an annual school finance summit, and this year we had Rick Tims come in, and he went through every single member district's fiscal profile, the implications for our districts and communities in terms of the gap elimination and the funding formula for education in New York State. It was an eye-opener. And he talked about how elected officials can help and how we can talk to them about these issues. And we also brought in Robert Hendricks to talk about losing control, leading anyway, and thinking like a leader, because these are tough times and there are tough decisions to be made. So it was a very, very informative day. In the area of collaboration, we advance efficiency, equity, and effectiveness as to our PPPE group. Kathy Ann is a new member of that group. We're represented on the Committee for Identification and Development of Educational Leaders. ECASB is represented also on the Erie County Coordinating Council on Children and Families, on the Erie County Industrial Development Agency, and the WNED Education Services Committee, where out there having an education's viewpoint presented to all these organizations and agencies. PPPE states its mission, is a catalyst to identify, encourage, and promulgate collaborative efforts to advance efficiency, equity, and effectiveness in districts throughout our region. Our main project for the last two years has been the P-16 Educational Leadership Initiative, and this is bringing together our K-12 districts and higher education to talk about how to basically make the pipeline smoother between the local district level and the higher ed level. What's happening, we found, is that we're graduating students, they're leaving our high schools, we're going, "Go forth, you've done the greatest PE, you've done great on your exams, and you're in great shape." And the colleges told us, yes, they come to our doors, we go, "Okay, there's another one who needs remediation." Well, we're preparing people on a certain set of standards, colleges are looking at another set of standards, we're pulling people together to say, "What's the difference? Where's the gap, and how can we fix that?" So that's been a tremendous conversation that's been ongoing. We've had two summits, bringing together college presidents, school district leaders, and teachers, and our work is going to continue, and three task courses this year on Common Core, on teacher preparation, and in partnerships between K-12 and higher ed. You see this little green sheet on heritage, it's a nice, a contest. You notice that in all of the Common Core focus on reading and language arts and on mathematics, somehow it seemed that history and heritage were kind of on the back burner, that we have a nice association with the New York Heritage Press, and they have some nice activities for those, and you can keep that piece of history, and we have a lot of that as well. Now, ECASB, we also talk about information and resources in this school board. We provide the opportunity to interact and share information with other school board members. We provide a weekly email to all of our members that speak at ECASB from term events, term activities. We provide periodic surveys of protocols and best practices in our districts, so you can share those. We provide our resource library for our members. Some of the resources we have are the Essential School Board Book, Better Governance and Lead, the Key Word of School Boards, Becoming a Better Board Member. These are all resources that all of us, we as members, as members, and also helps anyone else in the district who might self-identify as well. We also provide services for district clerks. We have a manual district clerk's function, with topics such as open evidence law, voting machines, records retention, records clerk saving, if I could a little more information on this, we'll put together that program for them during the year. I would now like Kathy Ann to talk a little bit about moving a dot. Move my dot. This is a new program, and we're really excited about this, this issue, we're gonna have a rally, and this is something that's been going on since 2000, as you all know, 2000, hopefully you all know, gap elimination, and with that, the government's locked off a lot from here in this state, and has been locked off since 2000. They said, they have restored it, but what have they restored? They've been standing there for the pile, but they're still locking money off, and they're coming out with all these great scenarios, and it's hard to spend money, but at the end of the day, they're locking it off. So, if you look at these sheets, you can see what we're gonna be trying to go after this year. And your first page, you see them getting saved up, based on the 13, 14 years, the Commonwealth ratio, the gap elimination. And if you see what we're doing through red dots, this is your dot, you, about the middle, or the top here, and what that, what we're trying to do, we're trying to move everybody's dots down, so that the gap elimination running, you gotta do this. If you look here, we're multiplying everybody's Commonwealth ratio from zero to 1.5, and then we have the bottom, and with the dot. Now, if you look over there, I mean, that's a, here's the tab, so this chart shows how much more tax we need to pay all of our districts compared to the wealthy ones. Now, as you know, wealthy ones are right at the bottom, and again, there's, so we need to do that, so we need to do a column, uh, we need to base on the tax level, and then we're turning column to column, and we're saying, surprisingly, you will find if you go to the average, you start looking at all the districts here, and it comes to where everybody lives, and you're, you know. So, we're losing, how's that, we have to eliminate the government, first student, and the Commonwealth ratio, and that's it for this year's budget. So, here's their, you know, common denominator, so you fall below the line. And again, we're moving about $800 per student, the gap elimination.
If you asked me on that, can you explain what the $800 represents to?
It's the, um, the gap elimination adjustment ratio, here's your, kind of like the op ratio, so there's a difference, and so that's what's making up the Commonwealth, maybe the money for the student. The average, the average reduction for a school district in New York State is $600. Where you fall in the Commonwealth ratio, where your dot falls on that grid, you're being reduced by an additional $200. So that's why when we talk about movement at dot, normally that's to a more favorable position.
So, so we're losing $800 per student because the state, to make up the state deficit, has reduced every district. Like she said, they give a little bit at the end to make it look good, but we're still losing $800 per student every year for them to make up for their shortfall.
Which is 200 more than the average.
Correct.
Oh, correct. Got it.
Well, we've had seven years, we've been in this hospital, and $900 to this process.
How much?
Eleven point nine.
Nine, nine hundred years.
How many years was that?
Seven. The last, last shot in here, goes real synopsis of where do people get lost. So this is the kind of information we're looking, and wanting to run through a number of districts, and we're hoping that people are concerned enough about this to come to the rally this weekend, February 27th. So it's a bled of voice that all the people in all the districts, and you know what? It's working out for us, and it's any better.
They're, they're still making out.
They're still making out because they're still taking money off, so when people see and say, "Oh, school board is ungrateful, and that is ungrateful," and everything like that, yeah, what we're truly doing is getting these problems to make way, and that's the charge, and to allow, you know, they, what's in that case, those are our base, and so we're good, and we're, 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 what power of the state, you know, what's fighting for everything. What we've done in our, let's say, recent last couple of years, is put together a fiscal profile, remember, this gets to show how much of the gap we now have to make up between student expenses and the revenue that they receive. And it's tough, as you know, it's even tougher now with tax, so we can't, not that we really wanna bring local taxes, because we know that we're gonna put them, it's really, you know, nowhere to lash, the funding to come from until the state starts committing some decisions. I'd like to speak about, I mean, eliminating the gap, I mean, all the billions of money that's taken off of the Commonwealth, is there goes to think our money paid our debt, but all we need is about $126,000 to open the gap, but we have plans, we can find that, realistically, we can, so, there's a way to go. So we're a little impassioned, as you can tell. That's everything that we had hoped to tell you. If you have any questions, you can email us.
How much does it cost to join?
Roughly $5,000 for this, this school district.
And are there other school districts in Erie County that are not part of this?
At this point, we have two others who are not, at this point. What we tend to find is what other local school board associations find is that people are trying to make their budgets, and it's, well, they won't join for this year, and then they turn around years later and say, "They know that's something that you two want to think about." So, we're here talking to you, and you might find it pretty bad. Anything else you can add? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll talk to you again, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Come to dinner on October 30th, if you want.
Thank you. Alright. Danny, you're up.
Yeah, I'm locked out, so he's gonna have to eat.
I don't have the right portion of the file. Can I do it?
There's some switches, though.
Okay, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Okay, I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum, A through R.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Public comment, anyone, two minutes, in the public comment. Looks like no one. Going once?
Okay, and new business. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Claire Flynn be accepted effective August 22nd, 2013. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Ms. Flynn for her one year of service to the district.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Kayla Zambe accepted effective August 26th, 2013. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Ms. Zambe for her one year of service to the district.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of maintenance supervisor James Walters be accepted effective November 16th, 2013. The Board and Administration wish to thank Mr. Walters for his 35 years of service to the district.
Second. Discussion.
I'd just like to say that he's resigning because he wants to retire, so that's a good thing for us, and for him, yes.
Why would he not retire instead of resign? Is deserved, I mean?
He is resigning, he's not retiring.
Oh, okay, okay. Alright. Is he here? No.
Do you wanna be rewarded for the purpose of retiring?
No, I mean, it's fine, as long as there's no issue from his perspective.
I don't believe he's here, he's starting his career retirement celebration.
We'd like to thank you for 35 years. You're here. I would be happy to catch that one. Good. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a memorandum of understanding between the district and Susan Schnopfer.
Nope.
Just for purposes of discussion, B is being withdrawn. It was withdrawn after it went up on the SharePoint and after it went out to the public, so we can't take it off the original agenda, that's why it's still there.
Okay, I'm on appointments now. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, David Keen be appointed as an administrative intern for the 2013-2014 school year.
Second. Discussion. I have a question, Cindy, is there a cost to that?
No, just to him, by time. He just spends his time. He just spends his time. He's taking classes.
Oh, I see, no. All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Lori Mohan be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective September 19th, 2013 and ending March 18th, 2014. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kristen Moreno be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective September 19th, 2013 and ending March 18th, 2014. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Deborah Smith be appointed on probation as a cafeteria monitor effective September 19th, 2013 and ending March 18th, 2014. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level one, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Paul Shepard be appointed to the safety committee as the Board of Education representative for the 2013-2014 school year.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Six.
You should have.
Okay, so read it from here. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Susan Schnauffer, who is on the preferred eligibility list, is being returned to a 1.0 FTE position in the business education tenure area as a .5 FTE long-term substitute computer teacher to replace Mary Carlson Nowicki effective September 19th, 2013 through approximately March 7th, 2014. Salary is based on ETA contract masters, step six.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Appreciate you here.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnauffer, for taking over. We appreciate it a lot.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Carrie Daly, who is initially certified as a business and marketing teacher, be appointed as a .5 long-term substitute computer teacher to replace Susan Schnauffer effective September 19th, 2013 through approximately March 7th, 2014. Salary is based upon ETA contract masters, step one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And Carrie is also here. Congratulations. Welcome.
Yeah. Appoint, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, appoint audit committee member upon the recommendation, Colleen Camby be added to the audit committee for the 2013-2014 school year.
Second. Discussion.
I have a question. On the audit committee, are we, are we in the process of finding somebody from the community and not just having board members on this audit committee?
If I can represent that. According to the charter for the audit committee, the way it's written right now is it is comprised with three board members. So you have to abide by the initial charter, which shows three board members. From there, what you can actually do, now that we have the third officially on there, is now they can actually look at it and say, do we want to make one of those three now a community member? But first you have to abide by what your charter says before you change.
Okay. So we'll be looking for somebody?
Well, they'll be, I think, discussing now if they actually want to bring in a community member, one of them drop off to change their charter. But you've got to change your charter before you actually do that. So, you actually have to review the charter.
Okay.
In fact, maybe we can do that in legal and policy. We have a meeting next week. We put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, this is from the addendum.
Yeah, we have voted. Let's vote.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Thomas Murphy, Director of Finance, be appointed HIPAA Privacy and Security Officer.
Second.
Discussion.
This is a new requirement, as government keeps giving us more and more requirements that we actually have to have a HIPAA privacy officer. So if anything does come up with HIPAA, there's someone to actually turn to. So what this actually means right now, nobody knows. So, so for districts at this point, so it's brand new. So, but we do have to be in compliance by October 1st.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dr. Calkins from Village Pediatrics be appointed as a school physician for the 2013-2014 school year.
Second. Is there a cost?
The cost is the same as last year, which is 6,500, but it's the exact same as last year.
At a cost of $6,500.
Did we use her last year?
We did not. Our previous physician retired, so we were in need of a new physician.
Dr. Keen will retire.
And, I mean, do you want to have discussion now or wait till we get to that point? It's up to you.
We'll keep going.
I just finished the motions of somebody second now.
Discussion.
Pre-verture second.
Okay. Just, just to let everyone know about the school physician. What we're looking at right now is every district has to have a school physician for student services. So sports physical, regular physicals, if a student has a concussion that can't be released to, you know, play until our school physician signs off as well. We put out an RFP, Request for Proposal. We're actually not even required to do it. It's a professional service, but we still put out the full RFP. And we had one person, one practice respond, at $27,000, as opposed to 6,500 we paid last year. Obviously, we cannot afford $6,500. Or $27,000. 6,500 last year. I mean, to keep the same amount, we're doing okay, but $27,000 would be just too much. So we did put the call out. Sean Johnson, are you here? Sean actually was the one who found a doctor who is willing to step in for us. She's stepping in on the student services only. This does not cover our 19A fiscals for transportation departments, so we are still going to need to find a physician for that. She's a pediatrician, so really not our comfort area for adults. So, but it does cover us for the mandate of having to have a school physician. So unfortunately, we didn't have a plethora of people all respond, so that's good, bad, you know, that's just where we're at with that.
When is the deadline?
We're actually during the school year, so that one. So we're into it, so.
It's not necessarily a deadline, as much as you must have a school physician. So every day that you don't have a school physician, you're out of compliance with the mandate. And anytime that there is a student who is medically unable to play in a sport or PE, they can't be released to come back until they have the permission of the, and the authorization of a medical physician. Or in our policy, it could be the nurse practitioner, right?
Yes. It's our physician and nurse practitioner.
So it's not necessarily a deadline. It just has to be.
So we're not necessarily pressed as of tonight to vote. There's one doctor that responded.
We don't have a school physician on staff right now, and we have not since the beginning.
Well, and just to comment, and I see Marissa shaking her head, and, but, I would, I would say this, and actually I am going to have Marissa talk in a second, but let's just say if a student were to get hurt, that student actually comes out, if we don't have a school physician, let's say if we partner with Nora Collins or someone else, and that doctor, not our doctor, actually said the student's fine to go back in, that student gets into an accident, hurts themselves, we're, we're really would not survive a lawsuit or we'd be found basically liable on a lawsuit because we didn't have our own school physician. Marissa, I'm going to, I see that you actually have a comment, so would you like to address that?
Just that we are kind of pressed for time for this. We, by law, by commissioner's rights, like they said, we are supposed to have a school doctor in place of the start of school. We couldn't, we could already have retired, we were working out contracts. But I had to call the session and ask the state to find out what do I do to get this student here. They said, well, it has to be your chief of the office, and I said, we don't have one. They didn't have any, so we had to.
Well, their answer was, you have to have one.
Yes, that was their answer, is you have to have one. I said, we don't. They said, you have to. I said, we don't. And they said, well, you need to fix it, so they got fixed it.
And I would say this, it's not an avocation for one specific person. If we don't approve this person, we could put out another RFP, we have one person respond. I, I don't see a second RFP changing the results of that. I would be very surprised if some new person.
I just ended up in this, I was like, hey, we've been doing this about three months. And when you send that out, and you really don't want that, it's $27,000. My problem is that it's way, we received $200,000. And so, and then we said, well, I just happened to find a doctor that's on the student. And I said, hey, we just wanted to, this is right. And so, there's no, it's very, very hard to get the doctor. And this doctor, Dr. Calkins, in my department, probably not my student's goal, this doctor. So the knowledge of this doctor, I just hope that I can be able to, and it's probably a good door because we don't, so we're at that situation, we're looking at doctor mandate on CSE, that there are calls and all those boards, so we're, we're relying. And this region, I have to say, was just, maybe took all the other districts, they didn't want to take ours. So, you know, because maybe because it was just, he retired so late, he's got the area of it.
Now Joan Calkins, she was the school board president of Hamburg.
Yep.
A lot of controversy.
With that part, now she has a new, she hired a new doctor for the office, and they asked me, would you be fine with that doctor, you know, be, I'm like, absolutely fine, you know, that doctor. But that's just, I know what you're talking about, and I know what you went through, and I know what's going on that, but as a professional in my field, she has faculty meetings with me, with students, and she is right on, I bet, that's a school board number five.
As far as a physician goes? Because my child was seeing.
Yes.
Oh, her.
We're not hiring her as a school board person, we're hiring her as a doctor, so.
Right, but as a physician, I'm familiar with her as a physician.
So, the thing is that, you know, if you want to, well, we had to do this, we realized if we had to put that out, I knocked off the home football games, I knocked off the wrestling, because we have a trainer, a trainer doing that. I don't want, it's very hard, and I was told by a couple of different things to build up our trust in Eden again, and that where we're going, that, you know, to get the business that we want, that, you know, you may not as apparent a much, I understand, I understand, because I'm a parent board, I may not like it either, but if it's overall, we need to act. actor. And if we don't like that doctor, then we eliminate the contract. And right now, we're out of compliance. We have a lot of sports going on, and we're out of compliance. So.
And then talking, but, um, we were at a meeting today at O P, and there were a number of athletic barriers there. And when I mentioned this, and I mentioned the 27,000, and I'm like, well, that's actually a good price. And I was like, are you kidding me? Fix this, because I'm under that share. Um, so I think that's why a lot of people type of stuff, actually. I also think doctors are being a lot more cautious because of the concussion policies, and maybe not wanting to take on this extra of duty along with their practice. Um, so I think we're a part of how many people are really small now.
Yeah. And it's, and I don't know why, like, it was a little different, the legal end of it, but it's just tough out there.
All right. Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the low position held by Jeffrey Meister.
I thought that was further down.
That goes further down. Okay. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the low position held by Jeffrey Meister, who took a two-year leave of absence effective September 1, 2011, through August 31, 2013, be abolished, and Mr. Meister be accessed.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I'd just like to clarify that the law allows for public school teachers to accept a position within a charter school and be put on a leave of absence in the public school, and that's what happened here. Um, he has not asked to return, but it is our obligation to put him on the preferred eligibility list.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the donation of an elliptical machine from Colleen Cott, valued at $600, for use at Eden Junior Senior High School, be accepted.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. And thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like you donated 600,000, though.
Sweet.
So, thank you.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of equipment to be used for plant science be accepted from the Eden Police Department as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
One quick second. What is equipment used for plant science?
Growing.
Like growing lights?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
I didn't get out of the discussion quick enough. We were like.
Shoot, tap me.
Uh, I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be accessed and disposed of as the district deems necessary, as set forth below. Uh, two phonograph tables, a treadmill, and a football scoreboard.
Second.
Discussion?
Are they going to be scrapped for the metal? Is that the idea?
Uh, I think the scoreboard's going to.
That'll a little, little, right.
What does that?
Actually, we're at Dave's. Dave's want to set it up?
Scoreboard was taken down to a new place. And we were approached to donate the old scoreboard to the little, so that they can use the parts that are in that scoreboard to repair their scoreboard. Yeah, they have the same one, and it just, we felt that, you know, to give it back to the community would probably where it came from in the first place is more appropriate than trying to just scrap it for whatever the value would be.
Yeah.
This way, it's getting repurposed, it's reused, and it was just a good PR for this district.
Just the other stuff on there? The tables and treadmill? What happens with that?
Um, I can't speak to that because I don't know. You said that.
If you're or I, I have to deal with the rest of the, um, the cycle.
I was just wondering if, you know, you take it to the scrapyard and you turn it in for the money for metal.
There's going to be a yard sale in the spring.
Giddy up.
Raise money for the budget.
Sometimes the decision's not made until after the board approves an access on this one. I can find out for you what's happening if you'd like.
Okay. I, you know, because it's all metal stuff. I was wondering if metal is scrapped, where that money goes to, and.
I guess, I guess the one thing I will, I'll just kind of elaborate and give you a forewarning that you probably need to get a pretty extensive list at some point. More materials to get access because our basement is full. So, we'll be talking to auctions internationally with the potential of generating some funds from the unused materials that are in the basement and bringing some of that to the carbon dash back to the district. So, you know, along with all the other stuff. So, these spaces really are bringing, I can tell you that right now.
That's what I was going to say. That's, that's actually now fairly standard among school districts, actually, to have an auction. Um, it's very low maintenance. You take the pictures, put it online, um, and if something's not done with these, that could be something that could be part of that.
Typically, what happens is when you go through auctions internationally, you either put a reserve on it or decide whether you're going to accept the bids for the lots that are there. You know, if you don't think you've got enough to work with, yeah, hold on to it and put it back out. But there's no cost to it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the audit committee, the external audit is prepared by Drescher and Malecki, P.C., for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, be accepted as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, $20,000 be transferred from the unemployment reserve fund to the general fund to cover first quarter billing for unemployment benefits.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, um, just a slight terminology change, um, since new auditing standards have changed some of the wording a little. It should actually read, uh, be transferred from the unemployment restricted, uh, unemployment fund restricted balance to the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. The next one's going to read very similar to that. So, it, the whole thing would read that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, $20,000 to be transferred from the unemployment fund restricted balance to the unassigned fund balance in the general fund to cover first quarter billing for the unemployment benefits. It just new gap laws says here.
I adopt that motion.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Would you like me to read the next one, then?
Yes.
Okay. So, the next one, then, would read, approved transfer of funds recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, $29,573 be transferred from the capital repair fund restricted balance to the general, uh, to the unassigned fund balance in the general fund as per the May 21, 2013 budget proposition vote approving the catalytic converter work for the cogeneration plant.
I adopt and make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 budget be increased by $229.48 to $25,728,838.92 to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Uh, item L on the addendum. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the girls volleyball overnight trip to the Horseheads Tournament, October 18th, 19th, 2013, be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Where's the U.S. anything? Or no?
This is a, this is an annual tournament that the positive district, uh, they've fundraised by the, by the team, the parents, friends, the kids out there. They, they just got a lot better than the local competition that they see selling in the open every year. And it's a lot of experience.
Very good. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Okay. Uh, for me, actually, the first thing I want to talk about is not even on here, but it's an FYI for everyone in the room. Um, everyone in the room should have probably received a mailer about three weeks ago from the state about the star exemption. And I know many people tend to see that, say, I know I need to do this, put it aside, and are going to get to it at a later date in time. Um, this is just a reminder for everyone here in this room. I've got cards, feel free to take one. Um, if you do not file by December 31st, you will lose your basic star exemption. And all this is, is basically a one-time, the state says, a one-time reregistration for the basic star. They also say they reserve the right to maybe change that down the line and make you do whatever you, but right now it's a one-time reregistration. Um, so, if you do not re-register, your taxes, including your school taxes, will definitely increase because you will lose that star exemption. And, um, for school districts, I mean, we're still going to get the same amount of money from the whole tax levy that we do every year. I would hate to see anyone here in this room lose their star exemption just because they didn't have a chance to register. So, please, if you want, take one of these. I will leave them right up here. Board members, let me just pass these on both sides. There you go.
I will just comment on that.
Yes. Feel free.
I got the letter in the mail.
Mm-hmm.
Got it online. There's like six questions. You fill it out, you're good to go. It's, for my family, it's a savings of about $700. So.
That's significant.
It's very important. Get back on and register.
Um, the next thing that I have, budget advisory team. Um, as, um, I discussed when I actually interviewed for this position, um, it was made very clear to me that we actually do want to go in a new direction, be very transparent, um, work on building community relations and letting people know exactly what the budget's all about. And in my previous districts, we actually had something called a budget advisory team. And that budget advisory team is basically a group comprised of board members, community members, parents, um, and representatives from each of the unions, um, sitting at the table, not necessarily this table, but it'd be before board meetings, sitting at the table, finding out what goes into the budget, and asking questions as to, you know, are we able to do this? Oh, I didn't understand this, can you explain that? What if we did this? It's the community's chance to find out about the budget, what goes into the budget, and have a voice into the budget. Um, the budget should never be done in a room by one or two persons. Um, it really is the board's responsibility, but, um, as the board, this is just a chance to also hear from the community and actually what's important for all community members as well. Um, but looking at that, to begin the bad process, we need to have community members. So, my question or, or my ask from the board is if within the next couple of weeks, um, and also from the community, if you know of anyone who would like to serve on the budget advisory team, please forward that to me, and, um, then we can start the budget advisory process. And then as long as we have members for that, we'll get moving hopefully as quickly as possible. Okay? So, if, please forward them to me, or to those communities.
I think we should place an ad in the Penny Saver for people that don't, you know, like normally come to the meetings or might be interested.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
How often are they going to meet you now?
Um, the, the budget advisory team meetings, what I'm familiar with, and of course, the board can always change, is generally means prior to the board meetings, the hour before the board meetings. That way, um, it is easier for the board because you're already coming here for that day. It's easy for the community because they're already planning to be here for the board meetings. Um, it also keeps it on track. So, if you do an hour, it's an hour meeting. And it also then allows the board meetings to be just at board meetings rather than work, working budget meetings.
Can you have a student on it?
Uh, we can have a student representative on it, absolutely.
We may want to ask around.
Any other questions on the budget advisory team?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Um, and everyone, please be patient as we work through our first year. This will be brand new for us, so. Okay, tax cap. I just wanted to briefly mention tax cap. Um, as we had heard in the presentation, they did briefly touch on the tax cap. Everyone now is familiar with the 2% tax cap that was actually adopted. But really, when you heard 2% tax cap, it wasn't 2%. There are all these exclusions which make it more than 2%. Um, the governor and state government has said ever squeezing municipalities and schools that really, we don't want to go with 2% tax cap anymore. We really want to tie it into the cost of, the cost of living. Um, so, that 2% no longer will be 2%. I can tell you right now, here's what I know. Municipalities, not us, municipalities are being held at 1.66% for exclusions. School districts, we will not know what our cap is going to be till, uh, January, which really helps the budgeting process because that just pushes you back all the more. However, that being said, even though we don't know, we know what the rate's going to be for municipalities, 1.66. Um, and I'm saying that we conservatively, at this point, look at 1.66. It could always change. Maybe we'll get lucky and they'll say 1.88. Who knows? But if they've already said it, they're probably not going to deviate too much from, for schools. Um, so what does that mean for a school district? Really briefly, we have a $25 million budget, 25.7 million. Of that, 10 million comes from taxpayers. That $10 million, that's what we're talking about. In the past, that could go up 2%, the $10 million. Now, what they're saying, that can go up probably about 1.66 of the $10 million. That's it. So, you have to hope that all of our other lines, the other 15 million, don't decrease because we really can't increase more than about the 1.66 on that 10 million. So, with healthcare going up, with raises, all that sort of stuff, that, they're all more than 1.66%. Healthcare will never be 1.66, I think, in any of our lifetimes. So, it's a balancing act. So, I'd just like the board to know, here's what we're hearing at this point. I don't know anymore. As we hear more, as it gets closer to January, I'll keep, I'll keep you guys informed. So, it will be an interesting year.
So, you're saying we won't find out till January?
Yes. They're telling us January is when they're going to set what the tax cap will be for schools.
Can it be overridden like the previous one with the 60%?
You can override it, yes. That has not changed.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I have another question.
Okay.
If 2% for Eden last year was really 2.99%.
Yes.
And we go with the 1.66% as an approximate.
Your 1.66 might, in reality, with your exclusions, and please don't hold me to this, but it might be more to, 2.2. I mean, so, because you still have exclusions. Um, we already know one exclusion we won't have this, uh, for this year, and that's employee retirement system. That's, will not be an exclusion for us this year. So, one exclusion we had available to us last year is not. So, we won't, um, because they look at how much each section, each exclusion is raising. And if it's going over 2%, that overage can be part of your exclusion. ERS is not going over 2, so that's not part of the exclusion. So, um, our exclusions probably would end up being closer to that cap than they were last year just because you don't, there's been exclusions.
Do you like your job?
I'll be in the bearer of good news. Um, we'll make it work. I mean, we, we have here every year, so we will again, but just want to at least keep you informed as to the state's goodness. Um, questions on the tax cap? Okay. Transportation and buses. So, we're talking about tax cap, but we're also talking about needs of the district. And this is more just an FYI for, um, the board at this point in time. Our bus fleet, and Rose, if you want to speak on this afterwards, you're more than welcome to, our bus fleet is aging out. We have three buses right now, roughly about 13 years old, that are up for inspection again this year. We are not bringing them before the DOT inspector.
In October?
In October, and the reason why is they will not pass. They're actually literally rushing out from underneath and above. And their, the structure is just not considered safe by DOT standards. So, to put in front of DOT, they're just going to fail. We're not going to have those buses anymore. Looking at that, um, in the past, the district has been on a regular basis of replacing buses. My recommendation is going to be to this board is that we consider that one again, and here's why. Not only does it provide for safe buses for transporting students, it also drives state aid. Um, if you are not replacing your buses, you, I mean, you get state aid on purchasing a bus. If you're not doing that, your state aid eventually runs out because the aid follows bus purchases. We have not purchased, uh, purchased buses for three years. So, our aid is going to be drying up very soon on that. So, it's both a safety issue and a financial issue. And right now, the need is there, and Rose, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Um, as my prior, um, presentation to the board, um, showed pictures of, uh, the brand of this, you know, my man, his heart, his whole, in the, uh, period of, that rides through, they're not even, uh, city, uh, city, right now. Um, bus number 74 is 48 years through the four of those, and, uh, flying to the point where DOT is, uh, second, they have to, uh, coincide with, uh, years. Um, the end of Charles, another 48 years through 75, will not be able to test the, uh, these cars as well as outside. The four of those, your metal, um, frame, the skeleton of the body, um, it has decayed so severely that it's all, uh, 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 so, you will now have 248 years of service and a seven test, uh, 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 service. I'm color 24 will be the last race there, uh, to be out. So, the bus will be as well, and, um, Mr. Murphy, who's in my shop today, underneath, and physically looking at, uh, 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 and it is back to the point, um, when we have to look at it, color 24, um, it will not, it will be put out of service, and we will not present it to the inspector because we are trying diligently to hold up our 100% DOT testing base, which is, um, very, very important to hold up to. So, at the end of point, we, um, our DOT inspector is very aware of the condition of our fleet, who watches, uh, uh, and, uh, so.
And let me just step in here. From a board member's perspective, the first question that I would ask is, okay, if we're taking three buses out of service, what are we going to do? And we've already thought of this and actually, and looked, and we're actually in a very good position because many districts are facing this. Many of the bus companies that actually sell buses realize that districts are not able to purchase buses mid-year, that they actually have to go to proposition, voters have to vote on it before decision can actually be made. So, what most of the bus companies have actually done right now, they provide loaner buses with the thought that you're going to capital vote in the spring. The good news with that, because we don't want to obligate the district if we don't do the vote or the vote doesn't pass. So, regardless of whether or not we actually had the vote or whether or not the vote passes, we are not obligated in any way, shape, or form to buy those buses or lay out a single dime for borrowing those buses.
What we're going to do is let it borrow.
So, we will, we can get those buses, and when these ones are going out of service, we will not lose service for the kids. We'll have the kids on a safe bus. So, for that part, our immediate need is met, so we don't have to worry about student safety. So, we borrow the buses, no cost to the district. So, the student safety is paramount, so we got to do that. But again, no obligation, so it's a no-lose situation for our district. That's step one. Step two, if you go to a proposition vote this year, there's one of two ways you can actually do it. You can go for a proposition for the exact dollar amount you want for just this year. So, if you want to replace two buses, you know, too large, too small, whatever our need is for this coming year, and do just that dollar amount and put that to the voters. Or B, you can actually do for what you think your needs are going to be for the next couple of years. You're just establishing this capital reserve, saying we either want it for next year only or we want it for a couple of years. So, you can either establish a one year for roughly 300,000, or you can establish one that's going to be longer term for, let's say, a million dollars. And I know that term sounds large when you hear a million, but that doesn't mean it has to all be funded at a million. That's just saying, that's the cap for it. So, you can either look at your immediate need or look a few years down the road at which way you want to go. Or if you cannot replace the buses at all, um, that puts us in a much tighter position, so.
We don't get the state aid until we actually purchase the buses.
That's correct. And where we're at right now is if we keep the buses, we actually have them replace the floors, to give you an idea. To purchase a bus, it's about $100,000. We get state aid back on that bus, roughly, don't hold me to this, but roughly about 65, 70% aid over the years. If we were to replace just the floor of it, of our old bus, that's 30,000. You're, you're talking, the cost ends up being about the same, but you're still stuck with a 13-year-old bus. bus. So in my mind, it's, you know, I would advocate going for the purchase. And that's what I would advocate to the board. Obviously, your decision, which way you actually would like to go.
But there's your rolling instead of...
It's actually, yeah, it's a rolling, it's a couple of years. So you don't, yeah. So it's a couple of years rolling aid, but you do get that back. And that's all part of your debt management, anyway. So, questions on buses?
So in my hearing, we need three buses.
What I would advocate for is too large, too many buses. Our need's greater, but, I mean, we have special education IEP needs that require certain students to ride certain buses, the small buses with air conditioning. We've had an issue with that. So we have needs on the many ones as well. I would say for the taxpayers, to be fair, I can't in good conscience say, get every bus next year. That would be a burden, that's a hard burden. So I think if we phased that in, that is a more responsible approach than doing everything in year one.
And then in year two?
In year two, right. You do almost like a rolling every year. You're a placing part of your fleet. So that's where we actually should be at a gradual. That's almost like saying, if your taxes were going to increase, you'd rather have them increase at a steady rate than a spike. And to tell everyone, let's buy everything next year, I don't think that's a smart move and it's not a fair move to the taxpayers. So I'd say you do it a little bit more gradual. We will make it through by doing it at a more gradual pace. I've already had conversations with the transportation department, and they can actually do that at that pace. On the flip side, and I know there may be more questions, I do just want to say about the transportation department, they did actually bid out their runs today. The drivers, rather than bidding out the runs the day before school, it was opted to wait two weeks into school. And the reason why is just, again, allow the beginning of the year to be as smooth as possible. And it worked out very well. We had about four or five drivers today who switched their runs. Six drivers switched runs, thank you. Very smooth process. So that did allow us to begin the year with having the teachers from last year, or drivers, pick up last year right, you know, right where they left off last year. So there was very little issues on day one. So nice job with the transportation department.
Is there a way for next year to do that before school? I mean, even like two weeks?
We could. And as I've told everyone before, my mother's been a bus driver, so I run these important questions by her first before I actually go and talk to Rose or look at the regs. You can actually do it two weeks before, you can do it the day before, you can do it two weeks after. The issue with two weeks before is drivers aren't here. And a lot of drivers are on their vacation, and those two weeks, many of them just are not around. So you're asking them to leave their vacation to come back to bid on a run, whereas they could always wait the two weeks, come back. We're not asking them to come back from vacations. You could. So I'm not saying you can't.
Yeah, because that's what I kept hearing was, why aren't we doing it two weeks ahead of time?
It is definitely better than what, in my opinion, better than what we've done the last couple of years, the day before. And the downside with the day before is it's hard for drivers to bid on it the day before and then to get out and drive their runs and actually see where they're going. And that's just, potentially could lead to problems on the first day of school if they haven't had a chance to drive their runs and actually see where they're going. So...
And with the two weeks ahead of time, we would only have
You could.
one bus driver doing that route all year, then. The other kids wouldn't have to have
You could. But again, the kids have seen the driver all last year, so most kids are still familiar with that driver. I mean, you have some changes. But yes, you could actually do it two weeks before. So I'm not saying you can't at all.
One of the things, well, actually, two of the things that I'd like to add to that is that this year, I'm sure that Mrs. Carsted could help me with the numbers, but we had how many enrollments in the last two weeks before school started? At least 13. And in some cases, they overloaded the bus runs and we had to switch kids on buses. So it's not stable two weeks prior to school. So that was one of the pieces that Tom took into consideration. I would have to say on that very first day of school, both Tom and I were down in the bus garage, and it was amazing to listen to the bus drivers on the radio, talking to each other and saying, "Hey, did you pick up Mike?" Because he wasn't there and all the lights were off at the house, and last year he was at a babysitter's. And did we get a note on a babysitter? I mean, the radio was hopping. And had there been new bus drivers, I think that it would not have gone nearly as smooth as it did. This actually was a request from some of the bus drivers that we, that Tom took into consideration.
Any questions on buses, bus purchase? Yes.
How long does an average bus last?
The district's, he's getting for seven, so he's sending it to town. So we're, we're, we're...
I'm wondering if it's our area that it's rotting out the bottom of the bus, if maybe this varies, salt from the wintertime? Does that come into factor, or the kids salt on their boots, or...
It's the same thing in the real cars. Same, if you're using calcium chloride on the roads, instead of salt, salt in the metals or, or, before, the calcium chloride, the water, I mean, when the sugar gets on there, they activate the, so you can wash hands, so they can, so...
Okay.
Providing how you spend, like, you're ready to, it's a lot, it's a lot easier.
Do we spray, do a protective spray underneath on the buses, Prinsel?
It's something, a service that many of us purchase on, when you cost the bus, is even, and it's really, but again, you know, the other point, we have to, we have to...
Just one more point, and to elaborate on something that Rose said, which is a good point that you made, there was a ruling that I'm sure that you and Mr. Martin know better than I do a couple of years back, that on state roads, that there's, you will never see ice and snow on those roads. I don't know what it's called, I just know that this, that they treat them heavier and more often than they used to as opposed to the secondary roads or the county roads. And so I'm sure that that's playing into the factors on the bus as well. Like Route 75 would be a good example of that. 62 would be another one.
And that's it from my report? Question?
I was going to say, we'll take this up when we take up the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanted to at least give a heads up so everyone knew what's going on. And that's all I have.
So while Mrs. Carsted is setting up, I'd like to just welcome Molly Newreiter to the board as our student representative. Welcome, Molly, and thank you for taking the time to be here. Molly is the president for student council and a senior this year, right? It's a big commitment. Thank you for doing this. So before I start to talk about the scoreboard and the speakers, I would just like to take a mention, and I'm sure it's of no surprise because it's certainly been on the news, that our hearts as a district go out to the Brockton-Westfield District and to Portville, which was the opposing team. It certainly causes us all to sit back and reflect, so I just wanted to make a mention of that. The pictures up on the screen, I think I'm actually going to move my seat, of the scoreboard and not the speakers, but this is a small slideshow that Mrs. Carsted has put together for us to show the very gray, wet day that the, that Toast took the time to put up our speaker, or to put up our scoreboard. It's quite impressive. And our cheerleaders. And I like the score on that scoreboard right there, right now. And so that was one of the most profound collaborative efforts since I have been here and in any of the districts that I've worked in, to show how much a community actually cares for its school district. Our all-sports booster team basically approached the school district for this, and I'm actually going to ask Marissa to speak on it in a little more detail because it was before my time. But it definitely shows how much a small group of people can do when they put their hearts and minds to something for children. And I'd just like to say, for Mr. Campbell, your words need to be up in big print because it does, it stands as a great symbol of the commitment that this community has for its district. I absolutely agree with you. So Marissa, do you mind just saying a couple of words in more detail about what this is?
Uh, am I speaking at the scoreboard or what we're going to do?
Nope, back up.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, well, some of you may remember last year during football season, I believe it was like the first weekend in October, the scoreboard just completely died. What we found out was the scoreboard was from 1977, so it definitely served us very well, but it was unfortunately beyond repair. So we went the rest of the football season with a scoreboard that was on the stage. It's used in PE classes, pretty much. And when we brought in the local representative who does most of the scoreboards, he said it was going to be a pretty hefty project. The scoreboard for the football field with sound was around 30,000 alone. And we had a little meeting with, at the time, the administration and some parents of our booster club that really only had about four parents on it. It pretty much, in my eyes, heavily failed. Well, then, when we had new administration come in, we had new parents come into the booster club meeting, they said, you know what, we really have to do something for this scoreboard in football season. So we had to get another meeting, and this time we had a ton of parents show up. We had support of the administration, we had support of the board members, and we said, you know what, let's work on the football field, let's work on the sound system, let's work on the gymnasium, the sound system there, and the pool. So we put together this, it's roughly an $80,000 project to do all this, and we're piecing it up. We're taking whatever money we can get and whatever support we can get, and we're purchasing it, we get money. So we had some money that the board put aside for us, $10,000, we got the scoreboard. It was going to cost us about another $10,000 to install it, so we had a local vendor donate and come in here with trucks and beans and for the country and do all that himself because that we need to give back. We had another local vendor who decided, you know what, I want to give $10,000 for the sound to be fixed, and wrote that check. And then when we had the ad and the penny saver, we started bidding caps from parents and kids that graduated from here from $25 to $200, so we were able to buy a wireless mic. We were able, the next purchase is the banners to thank everybody for the sponsorship.
So there's another piece on the bottom, sorry.
There's another piece that'll go on the bottom because this is a four-year contract, basically, that our vendors are signing. So our big vendors will be up there. Our vendors of, I don't want to say vendors, but our sponsors, basically, they'll be along the football fence, and we want to, we'll probably put up a sign to thanking everybody from Grandma Jane to the big vendors. And now we're set, we have a weekend of celebration. We'll have one more weekend of celebration coming up, which I'll get to. And then the boosters, we already met on Monday night, and we're ready to start working out the beans, though, because we just, this community has come together, we have support from the board, from the administration, and we're just going to keep going with it. So we're hoping to improve the gymnasium sound, the gymnasium scoreboard, and the school sound as well. We would like to thank the board, the administration, and our current sponsors at halftime of the homecoming game on Saturday, September 28th. We have a local student, Jessica Hall, she's in the National Institute, she'll be the first, sixth grade, she'll be the first ever to use our wireless mic before the game. And then during halftime, we will bring out the sponsors, the board, and administration to thank everybody, thank the community, and let everybody know we're not finished. We're hoping for bigger and better, whatever we can get. So we had a wonderful article in the Buffalo News this past week, which actually led to a couple of people calling us fans alone already about possible sponsorships, and we'll bring them, get one, let anybody know.
And Marissa, just a small point, that sponsorship, it's support, supporters.
Support.
That's the terminology thing, supporters.
Local support. And it just goes to show what this community is capable of. The one thing I heard when I came into this role was, you know, we can't, there's always roadblocks in our way, there's red tape in our way, we're never allowed to help out when we have no time to help out. And it's just been amazing, the community support when they're allowed to help out. This is a wonderful community, and they've done everything from pouring cement to writing a $25 check. So it's great, and we're hoping to just keep going. So you will all, the board, staff, community, but board especially, but the administration will see the invitation, thanking you, and we'd like you to be present at the homecoming game. It'll start roughly at halftime, which, hopefully, maybe about 3:00.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the Buffalo News and Felice Crusha, who is here, who, all I did was email her and say, hey, I've got something great to tell you, and she was in my office within the next day or so and so. Thank you very much. I appreciate your support for the Eden schools. And to Marissa, who works day and night as our AD and our PE teacher and our all-sports booster, Marissa has certainly spearheaded this and helped us find a way to see through the bureaucracy of school in legal ways so that we can get the support that we need from the community. The Raider Festival, which may have been up and down on that screen a number of times, it'll come back, it's okay. Raider Festival is something new this year that is being brought to our community by student council. It is in lieu of the float or the parade, and it is an opportunity for students of the younger grades to get involved. And Molly, can you say anything more about that? Do you know, since it's coming from student council, I'm sure you know more than I do.
Well, we really want to get the entire community involved in the homecoming day. And so we're inviting GLP Elementary students to come up, and each grade level in the high school is having some sort of program, and we're bringing in putt-putt golf, we're having baseball, so we're really just trying to get everyone involved, and we're really excited about it.
I'm excited, too, because it certainly goes along with one of our goals this year, which is to bring the school and the community together, all the schools. So thank you very much for speaking on that. Are we good? Okay. She's my Vanna for the night, so I have to make sure. Lucinda is my Vanna White. I didn't make her dress in a gown, though. You're welcome. The next item that I'd like to talk about is the data dashboard, and I may actually ask Vanna White here to speak on it slightly, too. But the data dashboard is a mandate that is coming to us from state ed, basically stating that for the first two years, that a portal will be opened that parents, students, and teachers, basically staff at school, would be able to access on their own child or their own student. One of the best resources to find information about the data dashboard is on EngagedNewYork.org. I would also encourage anybody who has anything to do with schools to be familiar with all the resources that are on EngagedNewYork.org. This particular one, which is a portal, basically, we've had a portal. Most school districts have a student management system. Ours is Power School, which allows a portal open to parents for them to see their students' attendance or students' grades. But there are school districts that are so small that they don't actually have one. And what the state is attempting to do is to make it much easier to access, much more affordable for school districts to pull it together and to have one single portal, so to speak, where all the information can be funneled through. InBloom is a non-for-profit organization that was brought forth to be able to help funnel this information. They themselves cannot see the data that they're bringing forward, they don't make any profit off it, they are just simply a avenue for this data that's coming in, I don't know how many different databases to be able to come through. New York City has also hired a company to audit the security of InBloom, and this particular company's job is to make sure that FERPA, which is your privacy rights as parents, and ours as a school, is followed. And Lucinda and Kelly and Lauren and I spent much time, as well as the other administrators, taking a look at the three options of this data dashboard. So what Lucinda is showing you right here is Engaged New York. She searched, I'm going to assume, just the portal, right? And was able to get to this FAQ section. This is just one avenue within Engaged New York to help understand all the changes that are happening through state ed. I found this one to be very informative and does answer a lot of questions in its links, as well as other sites that I have seen. Eden is prepared to make a decision on its data dashboard. Originally, it was supposed to, the deadline for making the decision was this coming week. It's been delayed until October, but of the three different portals that we could choose from, Dedication by Compass is the one company that we feel the most comfortable with. We feel it's easy to read, it's user-friendly, students could use it to go on. Eventually, if in fact they have this capacity, could use it to even upload information themselves as students owning their own data to colleges, that's not there yet. It's supposed to have early indicator warnings for parents as well as for teachers, if in fact a student could be in trouble in terms of assessments or attendance or their grades. It does not use social security numbers, it does not use private information that we would not want to see on a site such as this. But it does include state assessment data, it includes attendance, what did I miss? Discipline would also be on there. Discipline would also be on there. The data is never sold, that is part of the contract with In Bloom. And the whole goal of New York State is to provide a uniform, high-level protection as well as an easy access and affordable way for parents to view their students' data. Health records are also not on there, photographs are not on there, and In Bloom can't see the data, I know I stated that. Is there anything else that you feel is important to know about Dedication?
We are a mandate.
Yeah, you're right.
A mandate to use this for two years. For those two years that is paid for, we're going to reach the top funds, after that we have no choice. And that mandate, we must put it on our website and allow parents to access.
So it's free for two years, the next two years it's funded at a state rate?
Yes.
We pay.
We can buy it at the state rate they've got and we lock it in price for four years.
And then after that, we don't know. We don't know.
So it would replace Power School?
Does not replace Power School, can you speak about that?
Power School, which is directly connected to the teachers. Those grades and attendance that is in Power School is not gonna be fed off of the student portal, but it's also gonna add the state assessments. We do that information, we don't allow that to be done. So it's gonna be more.
Could it replace that?
Not, because I think it doesn't give you that precise, like, comments and things for like the form class. You might be able to replace some that, you know, we're all recording the sounds of the grade, which can't allow the students to come in with that right now.
Any other, go ahead.
When do we have to decide on this?
Well, originally it was gonna be next week, but it's just been delayed until the end of October. But it's not a decision of whether to use it, it was just which one of the three. Of the three, Dedication is the one that we feel is the best one for both affordability and user-friendliness.
So we could approve it tonight?
You absolutely can. Absolutely can.
So it's In Bloom, but that In Bloom is...
In Bloom is only the funnel system, would that be a good phrase?
So it's In Bloom, that's the funnel system, and it's, what was Dedication?
Dedication is the actual portal of the three. Can you find that section up here? So here are the three choices.
Dedication here, East Scholars MyTrack and Pearson School Net. Pearson School Net was about eighty-five cents a student, right? But it was definitely not user-friendly to me. It might have been to you, because you're very tech savvy, but to me, it wasn't something I wanted to keep drilling down on. East Scholars MyTrack was about three dollars a student and did not afford anything more than Dedication. And Dedication right now would be coming in at about a dollar a student if we had to pay for it, which we don't. It's free for the first two years, that's right. Approximately fifteen thousand, is that what I had read somewhere?
What's fifteen thousand?
For the following four years?
No, what we know is that for the first few years, we don't pay anything.
Right.
The next two years...
That would go with that, Dedication is a dollar per student per year.
And we have fifteen hundred students, so fifteen hundred dollars. But it's state aided, it's state aided too, right? So does that mean anything to us? We would get aid the following year back on? At about that same sixty-three, sixty-four percent?
Now that would be seventy-three.
Seventy-three percent, that's even better. And then we don't know after that.
So, put it down all in a nutshell. Basically, this portal is just going to give parents access to Common Core state-mandated testing results of their child.
Well, it could be Regents exams, it will be Regents exams as well, which is all state assessments. Also attendance, also discipline.
Okay.
Okay.
Discipline's on it?
Mm-hmm. Just like it is at our own portal right now.
Of their own child?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you can only see your own child. And even these companies that have been hired to work the data cannot see it, it's all encrypted. And there's an independent auditor to make sure that it is as secure and private as it can be, to follow FERPA, which is really a very secure act for privacy for you as a parent.
You already seen some districts decide.
You know, these were flying today, weren't they? I think a lot of decision had to be made, so we thought by next week, so people went to at least three trainings on this one. But I believe in the next week, we're gonna see some big decisions come out by schools for both Erie One and Erie Two. Bosie's is supporting all three, so we don't have to worry about being out in the dark on any one of the three that we would choose.
It actually, the accounts themselves, you're going to Engage New York, even teachers, and they will be handled by New York State, and they will be handled throughout the house. We won't have to worry about setting up the account at all.
Right. Okay. Questions on that? Okay, I'm sure you're gonna hear much, much more about that. So what do you have next for me, Mrs. Karstad? So what I'd like to share with you while Mrs. Karstad is setting it up is, this week or next week, the parent reports will be coming home to you in the mail with a letter, a cover letter from me, basically explaining that they are different this year and to urge you, with as much as I can possibly urge you, not to compare the numbers to former years. And this parent report actually looks different enough, and Mrs. Karstad will put it up in a minute after the video to show you just exactly what it does look like. And she will also point you out again on the EngagedNewYork.org site, how to interpret this parent report. But just to set us up so that we're all in the same place for this, I'd like to show you a seven-minute video that basically does explain what is different in classrooms and what is different about what your children should be learning in school. And so, please, I'm gonna move. Okay.
Now, Hendrick would be used to describe the answer that we offer you. What if you could focus on what is a difference between insect and spider that you find from the test?
When we have a lesson that's focused on account core inspections, these students are much more engaged with each other.
Another reason for education, I don't know, but we can have that.
I see the children are asking more questions, and it's not really directed as much to the student than the teacher.
Obviously, these words in English are hard to deal with. Hendrick's team, I'm sure. These words in English are easier to read, right, but hard to understand.
Yeah. Get the students more involved, see more facilitators, rather than taking on the legal in those conversations.
Now, I want to talk about how old, nothing is, my girl, as a teacher, we always have the end result and I would like to get a staff, doing a little treat, it's a little process.
Of course, the teacher can answer questions more quickly, but that doesn't matter as far as the board does, if you're understanding.
So I can visually visualize it and see my data, and see my information, like, what can I do?
You could put it in a bar graph, you can have, like, a, okay, let me do, in special times, I need to do more, right? I think we're seeing better results as teachers, because getting it, it's a lot harder, you have to work hard, you have to keep on having to work.
Miss Lynn gives an essay a month a week, and she has plenty of homework to do, a lot of stories to read. In English, you have to, like, you know, have to use certain words and have to interpret a poem correctly.
So there is this study that also says, may people find, enjoy, enjoy, try much, if there's a practice.
I see fewer and fewer passive learners, fewer and fewer children sitting in the back of the list doing nothing. These practices let all students be successful. Imagine thinking.
What do you know about common core science, the practice? There are people that, so, how is it designed with people? This, what is this, that we are, what do you think about that one?
Oh, this is a problem. And seven, nine, ten, what is this, so, it's a great signal.
And I think we're gonna have to admit, all of these guys have to score.
As you're seeing, it's incredibly important that we know conceptually what is going to happen in your classroom, what is expected of a student to graduate, college and career ready. I know you know what college and career ready looks like, and I need to infer that from those who experience.
We need to stick together in our own way. If we wanna lead the board, we have to deeply learn the board. We've studied the board, we've done the hard work of really looking at the shifts as we were planning. I'll take a look in the book, or look for evidence of those shifts in the homecoming board. What did we see? What text-based conversation did we see? What nonfiction did we see? What mathematical thinking did we see, students using? And we're looking at the question, at least, of those shifts.
I'm gonna observe what you've been doing, and it's really opened up doors as far as, okay, here's where I'm, I'm for, I'm wanting to go.
The bars have been raised, college and career readiness is different than it used to be. The changes in professional practice that the common core requires are asking people to rethink practices and ideas that they held dear for years. I talk about what lines that with these teachers. I ask them to see themselves as ones to see that they can grow and that it's safe to take risks and try.
When we are in the second verse, we're starting saying, what does this go, and what's the difference, as we say, of students and adults? As teachers, we should always evolve. What I was doing at the beginning of the year doesn't look the same as what I'm doing today, and doesn't look the same as what I'm gonna be doing this September.
It used to be, this is a big, quick answer, this is how you do it, one fine perimeter and outside, similar to that. But now, you really need to know why you're doing it, what you can do with it, and you really need to understand the method that we're doing.
Are you asking enough higher-level questions? Are you asking pretty cool thinking questions? So you kind of have to, what am I doing already? And what am I going to change in order to meet the goal?
Change is never easy. And I know the length of the teacher is very hard to change. And myself included, and if you had a, of second graders, and do this, right, in a singular, in a solution, scaffolding. Yes, that's correct, but it's not impossible. My main review is saying that in some of the texts, says that they have a life cycle. But does it say over here that spiders have a life cycle? No. But do you know that spiders have a life cycle? Yes, of course they do. Well, are we writing information that we know, that we find from the text? Exactly.
I think when teachers do it, when they're pulling information, when they're not pulling that, it helps, and that's something that I have, and I think that's...
I'm excited to see how the development of students who are versed in this kind of learning long-term happens. I can't wait to see what happens, when they've had two years, three years, or four years, and this can work. What they will be able to do on their end level. It could be still E2, and these are...
The Common Core is a national movement for once and for all, meaning skills and knowledge students need to be truly ready for college and careers by the time they graduate from high school. We work hard to change the way our students teach from 2000 to better align with expectations of the Common Core's consumers. We're proud and we're huge to ensure all our students, like, parents of the Common Core.
Visualize what I'm asking you. Is this enough information? Wonder what your partner did? Go around the test and figure out what that word means.
So, one of the key pieces to that video for me is that we are expecting students to get into more depth as opposed to more width. I know for some of us that are fifty or older, it was more a matter of memorizing what we learned or somebody telling us what we needed to know as opposed to truly, truly understanding it. And what they're finding is that a high school diploma is not good enough for what the colleges are asking our students to be able to do. And in New York State alone, there's a twenty-nine percent attrition rate for even the two-year schools of our students, because they just can't problem solve, they can't think deep enough, and their stamina's not there. The average, if you wanna call it a life cycle, of a student's ability to sustain one thought in school on a math problem is two minutes. And we all know that that two minutes isn't gonna do us any good. So this is a true, true shift in teachers being facilitators as opposed to the spitting out of knowledge. So what we should be able to do is the parent report, can we do that? Okay.
Just in, as I was asking you to show you, on Engage New York, there is a parent and family resources section, I've already clicked on that. Right down here is interpreting the new scores that you're gonna be seeing. They are a lot different than what we've seen in the past. And it says, understanding the tests. And it gives you a real basic information about how the tests have changed and the scores have changed this year. It gives you some detailed information about the assessments themselves.
Some sample questions on there as well?
Yeah, some samples. I did want to just show you an example of a student's score.
So this is an example of a parent report that parents should be receiving this week or next week. The explanations on Engage New York will explain each of the sections for the parent reports. What you will see on here, on the left-hand side, is level one, two, three, and four are the same as they've always been in terms of underperformance or excelling in performance or meeting at a proficiency level. The yellow bar or bar graph shows basically where your student falls within a level of one, two, three, or four. What I am urging all parents to do is to not measure it against last year. Your students most likely will score lower. We're learning how to teach in a new way, our students are learning how to learn this way as well. And in some cases, these assessments are measuring things that we still need to understand as well. So it may not necessarily be as much a matter of what your student knows as much as how well we all grow from this year to next year. And so that, to me, is a bigger measure. On the right-hand side, there is more explanation as to what that score means in relationship to what I...
And again, this is a different format. Don't care whether it is a different format than we've seen in previous years.
Yep. And if you have any questions as parents or as board members, please feel free to call any of the principals in the schools or Kelly. Kelly, is there anything you wanted to add to this?
Um, just that the assessment can compare, because the assessment is a brand-new assessment, they would never take an assessment like that, this factory or this store. So you might have that score can compare to last year, that score might be more than last year's score, even though it's better than the parent's.
It's asking them to think, not just remember. Can I ask a question? Questions, absolutely.
In former years, if your child scored underneath that black line, they were, for the most part, put into special ed, AIS.
Just AIS, not special ed, just academic intervention.
Was that the case with, this year, with these tests?
That the numbers are different, but if in fact you fell far below that black line, then what we're basically stating is that student does need some intervention in order to be able to problem solve or think about things in the way that we're asking them to. But the numbers are different and not necessarily as close to that black line. A student could be closer to that black line but under it and not be put into academic intervention, but may be progress monitored within their own class. It's every teacher's responsibility, as Mrs. Carter and I were talking about today, to not teach to the masses, but to teach in what we call tier-one intervention for what students need in those classes. And so we should be able to offer every single student in every class that type of intervention, whether it's reading or it's a little more thought process, than when I was in school and they would just teach the same way to all students.
Because of the difference in the scoring, just say, my kid scored underneath it and you suggested that he be in the special class.
Like an academic intervention?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Never had been in it before.
Okay.
Do I, as a parent, have the option to say, no, I don't think so?
No.
So it's mandated, my kid has to go into that.
But what we'll promise you is that we'll test him and find out if he doesn't need to be there, and then we'll move him out.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I think, something we need to work on, because if they had never been in there and it's just this new scoring, you know, and they did well in math and have always done well, but just fell underneath those standards, I don't think that that's a fair assessment to have them have to be in that class.
Mrs. Carter, is there anything you'd like to comment on that?
I can add that, that's not necessarily a new protocol, it's much of the regulation for academic intervention services. But if they fall at the point where the score is where they require academic intervention services, we have to provide it in a, rightly, to say that a parent cannot opt out of that service. But for our protocol in AIS, we look at other factors to get them being out of the program. So once we put that in based on state assessments, because the regulations probably they have to be, then they give that support, but then we look at the big picture of what they can get out. So if they then are doing well in their classroom, we benchmark assessments throughout the district. So if they then need those benchmark tests in the group long, their classroom, it's not a life sentence, they can get, they can get an hour's of program. But we are required by regulations to put them in if they're at that number, and the regulations state that parents cannot use that service, and that's state regulation, not an Eden regulation. But what's I, what our RPI program that the board approved, we give multiple pieces of proposals to decide when to release.
Or was it just a bad day?
Did we, as a school district, have a lot of kids that ended up having to be in this program because of these tests?
Mrs. Carter, do you want to talk about that?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a lot more students that are being recommended for AIS?
I'm going to refer to our community because they have the actual number, but I would say across New York State, because the assessments were so much more rigorous, it's very similar to if those people went up to the vet and education and had to change the cut scores and they decided, well, instead of saying, here's, they do so well.
There was a oh-eight, oh-nine.
They lowered the cut scores, and now you need this cut score to get a three and a four. There was such a huge increase, students needed academic intervention because they changed the cut score. Wasn't necessary that schools were doing worse, if schools were doing worse, they changed the cut scores, were in exactly the same condition as this year, and it was verified levels. Now they've changed the pass, and it's so much more rigorous, but that rigor has become such, so much higher, this year, the first year we gave them, that once again, students across New York State are really with, we have so many more students that are requiring RPI or AIS because of that.
So the answer is yes? So we have a lot more kids in them programs?
As anticipated.
And we were anticipating that, for sure.
We were, yep. So I'm going to move on to the next one, just in the essence of time. So the next piece that, I'm going to come past the parent reports and onto our website. The next piece that I've asked Vanna to do for me is to just show you the homepage of Eden, which shows you a section that we have under announcement called Parents. Lauren Carter is the coordinator for what we call CES or the Composite Effectiveness Score. Parents do have a right to request the composite effectiveness score of their current, of their child's current teacher. And right on the top of our, on the front of our web page is how to go ahead and do that. They are asking for the current teacher though, not last year's teacher. Any questions on that? Okay, all right. We good? You did a good job, thank you very much. Just very briefly, we had a digital sign meeting the other day, this is a sign that the board will be asked to consider approving for the front of the elementary school on Main Street. The structure that was put up years ago will remain intact. What we will be looking for is the capacity to do a wireless digital insert, so to speak, and also to stop trampling on our memorial garden and asking Mr. Graff to go out there and not have to move plexiglass or glass to change. That's all the information I have for you right now, but we will have a composite or a protocol to show you. We have various members from the community that are sitting on this committee, including the Alumni Association, to make sure that we maintain the historic feel of the elementary school. Questions? Are we okay? Okay. Buffalo Schools Request. I believe it's really important for our Board of Education to know that all Erie One schools have been requested by the Superintendent of Buffalo Schools to do the following, to come to a meeting by the Buffalo School Superintendent on September twenty-sixth, this would be for me to go to. Secondly, for me to verify that our board policy either does or does not accept students that are not district residents. And third, whether the school board would accept students from Buffalo Schools in next year or in this year. And so this is a request that is going out to all Erie One schools, not just schools that are suburban schools, it is rural as well. I think that Pinnacle closing so close to the beginning of the school year, for the most part, slowed the process down a little bit with a lot more questions as to what would this look like? But I will be coming back to you with more information so the board can make a decision about whether it would accept Buffalo School students.
And when is that meeting again?
September twenty-sixth. Just very quickly, the last thing that I have for you is January Regents Week. With the changes that we have in mandates from last year in scoring exams, one of the things that all of the principals and superintendents started to talk about within the last couple of years is just exactly how effective we are during January Regents Week of having regular classes within our ninth through twelfth grade. At Eden on Monday of that last week in January, which is the twenty-seventh, all of our juniors will take the English Regents Exam. So basically what we're asking is about one hundred and thirty-five students to leave their regular classes, revise all the other schedules during the day, try to put them into cafeteria, but yet feed everyone. It's not effective, and we can certainly proctor the exam, but all of the rest of the classes are shortened. And so that Monday certainly becomes something that is not an efficient day. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, there are other exams that are being held, although we might not have more than twenty or even fifteen kids taking some of those exams. What is different from last year is that the scoring is different. Teachers who have a student cannot score their own exam. So what we're ending up doing is pulling teachers from another grade to score those exams, because they need to be scored by Thursday or Friday of that week. My request to the Board of Education is that ninth through twelfth grade students not attend regular classes the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, which is Monday through Thursday of Regents Week. Only students coming in for midterms, final exams, benchmark exams, or students that have to take a makeup Regents Exam is my request that they attend school. In addition, because we have to pull teachers out of seventh or eighth grade to score some of these exams, I am asking that seventh and eighth grade students not attend school for regular classes on Wednesday and Thursday of that Regents Week so that we can do our best to score these exams in a timely matter and be able to talk about them in our Professional Development Day on Friday. This is something that is a change in the calendar, so the board would either need to deny that request or approve it at tonight's meeting or at the October meeting so that parents could plan what that week looks like. Conversation.
Why don't we put it on the agenda for October, since we're just hearing it for the first time tonight? It sounds okay, but...
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Thank you very much. And I'm done. Thank you.
Mine's short and sweet. Mine, I just wanted to thank Marissa and Jack Cuddy from both boosters for doing the scoreboard. Looks great.
Absolutely. Good job.[1788.12][1788.12][applause]